Number eighteenth budget meeting to order. Just so everybody knows, in attendance is Angie, our Finance Director, who prepared the budget along with Mr. Dillon. There have been several meetings over the last month, probably longer, with Mr. Dillon and Angie with department heads over the last two weeks. I have had several meetings with department heads working on this budget to commence on our sixth straight year with projecting a no tax increase to borough residents. It took a lot of hard work and a lot of effort, mainly on Jim's part and Angie's part. The last budget we worked on was the police budget, and we met with the chief, and we had some major cuts in that police budget. But again, we'll go over page by page, item by item. And again, it's only a budget. If somebody wants to cut something out of the budget, add something to the budget, feel free to speak on that item when we get to that page. As you can see, the first page, one of three, explains in 2012, the proposed budget for your consideration, one mill of tax revenue for 2012 is currently projected at 72,000. Basically, the same as it was and calculated in 2011. We will not know the final property assessment of the borough until December. That means that there can be tax reductions and things people pay on their taxes. If you look at all budgets, going across debt service, general fund, fire, recreation, and going down, you can see that the millage has been basically the same. That's projected up top, which is a total millage of 49.89 mils. The debt service explains on the bottom. It remains the same for 2012. 1.6 million dollars of borrowing, 1 million dollars of that was for the public works cleanup and new building, and 600,000 dollars of that 1.6 was for Almond Chestnut Street properties that we acquired. Does anybody have any questions on page one?
Mr. Chairman, under debt service at 8.82 mils, the 1.6, the additional money that you're borrowing for the garage, now, you're getting the money from the street lighting refuge and sewer. And looking back on those funds, that equals about 65,000. 16,250 in street lighting, 16,250 in refuge, and 32.5 from the sewer fund. That's 65. That'll repay the first million.
I'm missing the end of that, Jimmy.
I'm sorry.
It says, the last sentence on the debt service says that the additional 1.6 million dollars continues to be met in part from the street light, refuge fund, and sewer fund.
Right.
So you're taking money from those three funds to pay for the 1.6 million.
Right.
Right? If you go over to the sewer fund, the transfer to debt service is 16,250. The debt service to refuge is 16,250, and the sewer fund is 32.5. We're total 65,000. Now, you need 65,000 dollars a year to repay a million dollar loan, but you're still gonna repay the 600,000. I just want to know where it's coming from.
It's part of the overall taxes, so...
So where's it coming from?
The general fund.
General fund.
I mean, not the, excuse me, it, real estate tax revenue. It's the real estate tax revenue associated with the debt service.
So there's another 30,000, maybe 35,000 to pay that 600,000.
Correct.
From the general fund.
Debt service fund.
That's all I have.
But if we haven't spent 600,000, have we, Jim? For the purchase, acquisition of Almond Chestnut?
Straight, you've spent more than that. You've spent more than that. I mean, the borough has authorized more than 600,000 over the years to be spent. Matter of fact, we spent additional, I believe it's 136,000.
132, right.
Additional properties this year that were above and beyond the 600,000.
Wow, I'm surprised for, I guess it just accumulated.
We bought a lot of property.
Yeah, you know what, I wasn't keeping track.
Over the years. All right, on page two of three, instead of me reading every general fund, the revenue, general fund, the millage is proposed remain the same. The operating budget deficit for 212 is 669. The shore falls project be met by the general fund at December 31st, estimate balance of 712. You go through D transfers, at one time, there were 253,000 in '06. We're projecting 70,000 in '12. Shows you how slow real estate is and things like that. Building permits, we're projecting 80,000 in '12 from 292,000 at one point.
Is it that bad with the building in Bristol Borough right now?
It's bad all over. Earnings on our investment, we're projecting 600,000. In '08 was a million 114. That keeps dropping, and if you notice in '11, 700,000 compared to our budget number of 850. That's 150,000 less, we'll probably receive. We received a one-time increase of 131,000 from the state for the pension funds. Expenditures for 2011 general fund budget is 4934. Our budget expenditures was 4953, which is a difference of 19,333 or a 4% increase. 0.4% increase. The fire funds, pastor account, the recreation fund, his proposed budget is deficit of 40,000, and we're projected to make that up with a 46,000 balance, and that's still keeping the 10,000 in for the theater, which we'll talk about. No change in the rescue squad. The street lighting budget continues for that four-year changing of all the lamp store out town. The special roads, there's no comment on. Does anybody have any questions on page two?
Well, up the general mill top of the page. It says the millage is proposed to be the same. So you're, you're a maximum money guy, 30 mils, right?
Mm-hmm.
The proposed operating deficit is 669,000, and the shorefall is projected to be met by the general fund. So it's an account balance that you have of 712,000 that's gonna go into paying the 699.
Right.
Does that include the half a million dollars in debt service that was paid off in 2008? Is that where that money's coming from?
The money comes from the budget, Jimmy. I'm not gonna get into 2008's, five, we paid that off, we should've did this. It's part of an overall budget.
I don't know. I want to know what a half million dollars is, Ralph. If the loan was, it's in the general fund. It's a simple question.
A simple question.
Don't pass around it. Just give me a simple answer.
And we went through this for three years. I asked you a question.
And you're still collecting the half a million bucks. I just wanted to know where it's going.
Right, and that half a million went from...
Just tell me where it's going.
Debt service to general fund.
Fine, is that where it is this year?
And I asked you a question when I said to you, okay, let's take the half a million, give it back to the people. Now, we need to meet the general fund obligation. How do we do it? You said raise taxes. That was your statement, am I right?
See how you take that out of context?
No, I don't want to change the statement.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna give you my statement.
That's fine.
You have, 500,000 represents seven mils.
Yes, it does.
You were telling me you had medical expenses that may, that were increasing. I said, fine, take out your increases and give the rest back. That's what I said.
That's good.
So maybe you have a seven mil, you keep two and give five back.
Then how do you meet the general fund obligation?
Well, I don't know. You gotta cut somewhere, don't you?
Where do you cut? When we get to that budget, show me tonight where we could cut 500,000, and I will do it tonight. I asked you that last year.
Yeah, but you see why, Ralph, you're missing the point.
No, you're missing the point.
The point is that it was in debt service, and you took it out of debt service, and you should be, you should go back. I mean, the people are done paying for it.
We took it out of debt service, and I agree with you 150%. Let's give the 500,000 back to the taxpayers. It's their money, it was the debt service.
Right.
We're on the same page to this point, right?
Okay.
Now, we have a 500,000 dollar increase in the general fund. Tell me how to pay that increase.
Well, you'll have to...
You said raise taxes.
You'll have to cut it.
So then you go from lowering taxes in...
Because you're not willing to cut anything. I'm willing to cut.
I'm willing to cut tonight, that's why we're here. I'm asking you tonight to show us how to cut this budget, and I'll agree with you. I can't be any clearer.
I've gone over that with you a dozen times, Ralph. It doesn't get anywhere.
No, because you're, you're not making sense the way you're talking, Jim. You're saying to take this money, if I have 500,000 in this hand, and I'm giving it to you, and in this hand, we need 500,000 to balance the budget. You said to me, we'll raise taxes to equal this 500,000.
Now, I would cut it, is what I would do.
Okay, now I'm asking you tonight as a councilman.
Listen.
I'm asking you as a councilman tonight to show this council how to cut 500,000.
You took the loan that was paid off in 2008.
Okay, and we agree with that.
You, you paid off the loan.
Right.
You don't have to pay it anymore.
You're right.
Okay, so don't sit there and say, well, we haven't raised taxes, because you have. You raised the money, you have to pay it now.
We're on page two here, Jimmy. If you, if he feels that he can cut this budget down, I spent the whole weekend going over it, I've got highlights. So where you think we can cut, Jimmy, you should speak up and tell us. Seriously, and let's move on to the next issue.
I mean, that's kind of frugal for me to try to do that.
Why?
You're building a 3 million dollar garage, you wanna ask me where you're gonna cut from?
That didn't come out of this.
Of course not.
You always want to dance around the question. You said if you could save 500,000 in this budget, you show me where, and I'll vote...
Fine, well, you know what? Don't sit there and tell people you haven't raised their taxes.
We haven't. When, the millage was at, at the total millage, did we increase the total millage of this budget?
2008, you did.
No, we didn't.
You went from 25.8 to 30. Yes, you did.
It's been six years.
2008, the millage, the millage in 2008 was 25.80.
Okay. Is that when we all voted for the tax increase, including you, for the rink and everything?
No, that wasn't that year. That was 2006.
I'm not trying, this guy doesn't make sense.
Three questions, real quick. Recreation does not count the skating rink, correct?
No.
Okay, number two.
They have their own budget.
The budget for the 10,000 for Riverside Theater, we're gonna talk about that later.
Yeah.
Okay, number three, to get back to what Mr. Lutz said, we'd love to give taxpayers back money. Everybody here would. But with that being said, we always thought that the interest from the sale of the water plant was gonna be coming in and be an expenditure for us to use. Obviously, that never amounted to anything. It lasted three or three years, and all that money went right into the general fund.
Correct.
Now, if I was up here in '96, there's no way I was gonna be selling that water plant, no matter how dilapidated it would've been. You don't sell that if you play Monopoly.
Right.
So, but that's something that's, it's gone, it's over, but all that interest from that money has to go into our general fund now because we have nowhere else to go.
Exactly. And you made a good point, Pat. At one point in '08, there was a million 114 coming in in interest on that 24 million dollars. This year, we're projecting to bring in 700,000, and next year, it's, I think you got it down to six? I'm not at that page yet. That's almost 500,000 dollars less, and we're still balancing the budget. So when he talks about where's the 500,000, if you, you keep losing interest, you still gotta make paid salaries. Salaries don't change. So if we, if we give the money back in this hand, we still have to take it in here to pay everybody. So it's, it's a moot point of what the statement's being made.
If you remember correctly, people here remember, we were getting 1.6.
At one time.
On that money. And now we're down to 600,000. That's almost, just under a third, I mean, just over a third.
It's a lot of money. Three of three. You got your non-tax millage fund budget, your capital improvement budget, refuse collection is 360 dollars per unit. That means, Greg, for you and Tony, that means every borough resident pays 360 dollars for trash. All we do is collect that money, and we pay for the trash removal with mascara and some dumpsters and things, street sweeper, stuff like that. Sewer budget is on its own. The state highway aid fund calls for 114,191 to meet the bond obligation in '09 for the road program, which is a 15-year bond, will be paid off in 2024. State borough code, explaining to council, we need to adopt this, and since it's a reorganization year, the budget could be reopened in 2012 by the majority of council, meaning that if five new members won, or there was a majority come in January, you could reopen it and redo the budget. Does anybody have questions on page three of three?
One quick question, Ralph. Under the sewer budget, third sentence says, it is noted the sewer budget continues to operate at a deficit. Does that mean the sewer rates are gonna go up?
One, the sewer rates are controlled by the sewer authority. As noted in the sewer fund, the rates were decreased by 5% back in 2007. So for one, two, three, four, five, six years, there's been no great increase there, and that was after a decrease. I think in time, if additional customers are not found, and if Bristol Township does not send us sewage, that basically 18% of the plant had, was built for, I think in time, there's that very real possibility. But right now, the rates for our customers are the lowest in the county by far, to my knowledge.
Well, do we still have the, we still have about a million dollars in debt on the books owed to us? How many can I collect in that money? How much I still owe you, though?
I think it's about a million dollars.
Still a million bucks?
Yeah, part, about 400,000 from the old water company, and, and, I mean, there's still a sizable additional amount owed from, I would classify it as current accounts receivable over, say, the last two years, because we've had a number of customers using the service and not paying. So we're taking steps to make sure that property is, the properties are leased, so...
I realize...
Also concurrently with that, you know, the borough authority and this council, because they did receive a 1 million dollar grant to make capital improvements, as well as a 2 million dollar low-cost state loan to make improvements at the plant. In essence, that plant is being rebuilt after 30, 35 years. We just had a unannounced inspection by DEP and the Board of Health, and they complimented the staff at the plant, saying that plant almost looks like a water plant. So I think the staff and, under the leadership of the authority, has done a fantastic job. Most, I'd just like to comment on that sewer fund. Most of the problem we're having right now is Bristol Township was sending an enormous amount of flow to the borough, and politically, the new president, council, and everybody else shut the valve off, and so we're not sending anything to the borough. And in our contract, there was supposed to be a minimum obligation of flow that comes to Bristol. I think it was a...
200,000 gallons a day.
200,000 gallons a day. They just literally shut the valve off. When Jim and Billy went back, and there was this major battle a couple of years ago, when they signed a new contract, our previous solicitor, and I'm not downing anybody, missed, they redlined the contract and took that out, and never caught that in the contract. And what happened was, they have a right now to shut the valve. Well, when we had all that rain several months ago, I get a call from the president of the hospital that said, the sewer's backing up into the hospital, we have a major problem. Bristol Township's saying the borough won't accept the flow. So myself, Jim, and the solicitor, I called everybody, and we met out at the hospital with Bristol Township officials and their engineer. We told them that at no point in time do we ever say you couldn't open the valve, and we're telling you to open it now. Back and forth for about an hour or more while this hospital has a tanker truck sucking out the manhole at 30,000 gallon at a time to try to stop this sewage from running into the basement of the hospital. Finally, they were gonna get in court order to open the valve, and then the engineer, because the township said we're not opening it. Finally, the engineer opened the valve for, during that heavy rain. I mean, we were getting, I can't even tell you how fast.
Hurricane.
It was the hurricane. We were getting a ton of flow coming in, but since then, they shut it again. So they're playing games, basically not with us, with the DEP, because the DEP, their plant isn't capable of handling this flow. So apparently, we're either gonna have to sit down with the new council that's coming in in January, hopefully, we could talk to them, and they will end up getting this. But you take 200,000 gallon a day out that they were paying us for, is a major decrease in income.
Well, we, we had a copy of a letter that was sent a couple of months ago in our packet. Did we get a response to that yet?
No.
No, we haven't?
From, to DEP, the regional director, no. So that's why our plant is doing great. We could handle up to a million gallons more a week. I think it's a million, Jim, a week we could handle.
Yeah, a week.
And a week, and they just don't want to open the valve, so it's, it's gotta come to a head eventually, but we're not gonna sit here, what we told them is, you have a problem today, and you open the valve, and then we gotta go do extra work at our sewer plant. We need to know what you're gonna do. So there's been talk that this new council is gonna be more open to sit down and talk with us. I'd like to point out that Dow has approached us also for giving us additional capacity, and matter of fact, we're supposed to meet with their representatives again tomorrow, so, you know, hopefully, with some of that vacant property there, that gets developed, that will probably come to the borough sewer plant also. Okay, all right. The next several pages, does anybody have any questions up, Tony, or drag up to where we are right now?
No, real quick. So basically, on, on capital improvement, you said we spent 136,000, but in actuality, it was 132, 267 dollars, correct? For Chestnut Street.
We can leave it here for 2013.
Right. All right, the next several pages, I'm not gonna sit here and read every page or explain every page to you, but our fire chief took a lot of time to put this packet together and to explain why he thinks they should be increased in their allocations, and why the station should go from five to four. We had spoke last year to the mayor, who was gonna review this and come back with a suggestion to council on what should happen here. So I don't know if you want to do that tonight, Herbie, you and Bobby, or you wanna, are you prepared, Bob, to give us any report?
Yeah, I am. I make a recommendation that we knock it to four fire companies.
So you want to take the allocations from five fire companies to four companies? That's your recommendation? As far as the increase, I mean, I don't know, we could talk to council. I'm not in favor of raising taxes, Herbie. We got a balanced budget, and, I mean, I, I want, really don't want to raise taxes for one fund.
I understand, Ralph. Like, by pointing this and...
You did a great report.
For 16 years now, there's not been a raise for the fire. And that, that's just, I mean, no, no other department, I don't know, like, even our own living without a single raise in 16 years. The other thing is, back in, I don't know what the year was, the taxpayers voted, the voters voted and approved the three-mill fire tax. So that's already been approved. And at one point, the tax was actually higher than the millage now. When there was a reassessment, the borough simply readjusted and lowered the millage back to the 80,000, and that's where we've been. I, I show you that, you know, I don't want to give the roll charts, but, you know, we're looking at now, the buying power of that 16,000 is 61% of what it was in 1996, and it's really...
And that's been our argument with the 24 million dollars when they sold the water plant, that the interest at, when the 24 million was worth, what it is today, is probably about 70% less you can do with that interest than you could've.
Right. But then even, I mean, even, I mean, going down the four helps three of the fire companies. And, but the borough...
I said, as far as I'm concerned, the mayor oversees the fire departments. If his recommendation to this council is going from five to four, I, I'm speaking only for myself, there's seven other council, I say that I would agree with the mayor. If somebody, we have from now until our work session, if the fire company that's being reduced needs to come up here and do a presentation to tell us not to do this, or to contact the manager, in the meantime, we have a work session on December, what is it, the second, third?
Third.
Third. At that point, they could come up here, because we're gonna adopt the budget at our, I think, December 10th meeting.
I'd just like to see the borough develop some type of plan, five years out, where there's, you know, we can't leave the fire department at the same rate for another 16 years. At some point, we need to raise some of that fire tax that was approved by the voters to increase the allowance to the fire.
If there was a way that interest rates were coming in better, and we could increase a half a mil and take a half a mil off of something else and keep the millage the same, which that could be considered a tax increase.
I think, if we raised it a quarter of a mil, it would, it would get us to the 100,000, and it would be 20...
And I know you're not asking for a lot, believe me.
Ralph, how is that done when you, when you turn it into four? By a...
All the 80,000 that we have now.
No, I mean, is it a resolution? Is it just, how do you do that?
Don't worry, you would have things...
Billy?
I'm sorry.
If we're going from five to four, does it have to be done by resolution?
An ordinance?
No, I don't think, I have to look at the current ordinances. I don't believe it's by ordinance. If it's not, we'll do it by resolution, but if, if we have to change the ordinance, I, I don't have the answer to that question. If it's already in the ordinance. But I don't think it is.
Okay. Bobby, was there any conversation at the fire, were any resistance to this?
Yeah, a lot of resistance. I had asked the fire company in question to prove to me that they had two chiefs.
Two line officers.
Two presidents, two treasurers. They were able to prove that they have two presidents, but I don't know why they have two presidents, but everything else is, they have one chief, all the lieutenants, and their one lieutenant.
Well, again, I mean, I'll have the mayor, I'm not, I'm sorry, the manager send a letter out tomorrow saying, this is their request, if they want it, I mean, anybody's welcome to come here on December 5th, and we share opinion, and then I guess we could listen to their concerns and then make a decision that night. Okay?
To be with them this time last year, my recommendation was to keep it at the five because they had already prepared their budget.
They didn't have enough time.
And I told them that the following year, for 2012, be prepared to get a decrease.
Didn't prepare then.
Prepared and...
All right, the next several pages is just borough code issues, explains things, and then if you go to the... And then if you go to the 2012 budget with the pie chart, it shows you the general fund is at fifty-nine percent and the debt service is at seventeen percent. But if you look back to 2004, the debt service was fifty percent. This chart right here, the debt service was fifty percent. And this, we got it down to seventeen percent. So when everybody says, "How are you constantly not raising taxes?" The problem is, we're paying off debt and we're just moving money to different accounts, which to me, it's the same piece of the pie. We're not ordering an extra pizza. We still have one pie that we're working out of. And I think that's where we've been successful in not really putting the borough in any jeopardy with serious debt. Our borrowing power went from, what was it, Mr. Dylan? At one point?
In the end of December of oh-four, the non-electorial borrowing capacity of the borough was three million, one hundred and twenty-nine thousand. At the end, or the beginning of this year, January 2010, the non-electorial borrowing capacity of the borough is over fifteen million dollars.
Triple A credit rating.
Like five times the amount.
So does anybody have any questions to this point? Okay. The tax college funds, it shows you. All right, the first budget we're turning to is the debt service. And if you look at the debt service, you got your income, your revenues that are coming in. Our projections look like they were pretty close to what we projected for 2011. And our expenditures, I mean, our revenues for 2012 in taxes and everything, we're hoping to come in the same. And if you look at page two, our expenditures are basically after we're done with the mill street loan expired, the refinancing and reconstruction bond is gone. There's a lot of things that are no longer here, and we're transferring twenty-five thousand dollars to the general fund. Have any question on this debt service?
Where does the twenty-five thousand come from?
You got to go to, from the revenue associated with the, with that fund.
Okay.
There's a thirty thousand dollar deficit, Ralph.
Pardon me?
Thirty thousand dollar deficit.
Thirty thousand dollar deficit is met by the thirty-two thousand dollars.
An estimated balance of fifty-one thousand dollars, so that's why you're able to balance.
And we should end up at twelve thirty-one with twenty-one thousand, three thirty-seven. Follow that?
On the real estate taxes, is that on ninety percent or a hundred percent?
No. It's about ninety-seven, yeah, ninety-seven percent.
Ninety-seven percent? Do we expect, since the economy's bad, that we're going to be seeing a lot of people shooting up the...
Well, we thought that last year, Pat, and we collected almost all of it, so...
Pat, in a sense, it doesn't matter, because the difference is made up with those taxes that are two years old that are leaned. We're going to get that hundred percent every year. So, you know what I'm saying? It kind of all washes out, but that's just the best estimate that Angie has.
It's impossible to come up with, it's a hypothetical number, really.
Right.
And I was just wondering if it was on a ninety percent or a hundred percent factor.
Now, we usually reduce it, because we know we're not going to get a hundred percent of the current taxes, but when you add in what we're getting from the previous years, it pretty much should add up.
So we're at ninety-seven percent, which is just fine.
Jimmy, do you understand the thirty thousand for how we're doing it?
What?
You said we're thirty thousand dollar deficit.
Well, on page two of that budget is revenues less expenses is thirty thousand, two hundred and forty-six.
Right.
I guess a little concern of mine, and if you look under expenditures at the bottom of the first page, skating rink debt, you budgeted three hundred and forty thousand dollars a share. And it's going to, I mean, three fifty-five.
No, we budgeted...
You're budgeting...
Three forty, and we're going to pay three forty.
Three forty to three fifty-five, that's what you're budgeting for 2012. It's a difference of fifteen thousand bucks.
Right.
I don't know, I mean, that's, that what's, that the first payment?
No, but the interest goes down.
And the interest goes down.
The interest is going up, the interest is going down.
So the, yeah, but my concern, Bill, is that the interest went up five percent.
No, the interest for next year is going down.
Look at the top line on the second page from...
The interest.
Three oh-three, three twenty-five to two ninety-one, four twenty-five.
Yeah, but it didn't go down on the first one, it went from three forty to three fifty-five.
No.
Well, they're different bonds.
Three forty is what we're paying them this year.
Yeah, that's what you...
That we budget...
You budgeted three forty, and you're paying three forty.
Three forty, we're going to pay them three forty. In 2012, we're budgeting three fifty-five, we're going to pay them three fifty-five, but the interest comes down to two ninety-one instead of three oh-three.
They're for the rent.
So that's a principal payment, the first one?
Yeah, right.
That's a principal payment.
Principal and the next one.
And the second one is the loan payment, so the loan payment goes down.
No, they're both the principal and interest, right. It's not exactly the same every year, but the principal's going up next year, but the interest has gone down. And I'm not saying they're going to equal last year, but...
The interest should go down when you make, after you make a payment, the loan payment.
It should almost equal to the end.
I just saw that fifty thousand there, because I don't know how that, that was just the principal then.
Yeah, it's based off of the debt service schedule that was part of the bond that was financed in 2004.
That's not a problem.
She's going to make a note to put the principal there, so it's clear, it's principal.
Okay.
So the thirty thousand dollar deficit, do you understand how that's being met?
I don't have a problem with it. I'm just concerned that, you know, you're...
Oh, you asked about the thirty thousand.
Well, your thirty thousand dollars, you have to make up somewhere.
And we're making that up by the fund balance of fifty-one, which will have twenty-one, three thirty-seven. All right, the next one is the fire fund. Basically, we take in one point two five mils, and we disperse the one point two five mils over to five companies this year. It'll probably be dropped to four companies. Any questions on that? I'm thinking about skipping the general fund and coming back to it. It's going to take a while. Could you do that?
Sure.
Does it matter? All right. The rescue squad fund. Basically...
You skipped the recreation two, huh?
I'm recreation fund, I'm sorry. The recreation fund. Our revenue, workers' expenditures on page one and page two. We're taking in, we're projecting, we budget two forty-five, one twenty-five. We're probably going to spend two forty-seven at the end. I mean, we spent as of now, two forty-seven, we're projecting two forty-nine. And income, our expenditures, we projected to spend, our budget was two eighty-four, we spent two oh-four, we're projecting two eighty-five by the end of the year, which I don't foresee is getting anywhere near that number. Hopefully, there should be a surplus, more than we're projecting in that account. So does anybody have any questions on the recreation fund budget?
Ralph, on the bottom of the first page, capital outlay park, thirty thousand, what they're for?
We're talking about the hardball field at Jefferson Avenue Complex. The infield needs some significant improvement, as well as the backstop needs some...
The hardball field needs what?
Hardball fields, infield needs work, peaks and valleys and ponding, as well as the backstop needs some work. I'm not sure this will be adequate, but it's just part of the discussion.
We like to start putting some money every year into the fields. We think it's going to be a lot more than thirty thousand dollars to do the hardball field, but we're allocating thirty, and again, it's a budget. If we have to cut some money somewhere else to, if, why don't we go out to bid on it? But we think we'd like to put new backstops up and start redoing the infields.
You know what, Ralph, can you just, parks and maintenance highway salaries, I have that highlighted. Can you just explain to me what that is exactly?
That's for cutting the grass down there, maintaining the fields, the soccer fields. What, the easiest way to do this is we got to understand, at one point, everybody just took everything out of the general fund. But we're trying, and George and I were trying to keep ours, that we want to know how much time you spend on street lighting. So in the street lighting account, you'll see manpower for that. In the recreation fund, you'll see salaries in for recreation, for cutting the grass, the parks and all that kind, down at the lagoon. Sewer fund, you're going to see money there, because some of the guys go help out at the sewer plant. So we're trying to get a budget that really reflects what everybody's doing, instead of just taking everybody's salary out of one budget, which I think is the right way to do it. If they're doing snow removal, you can't predict how many hours you're going to spend, but let's put a number in that we feel we're going to spend in snow removal this year. I mean, I remember when I first started, the snow removal budget, Pat, was like two thousand or something like that. I mean, we spend more than that in salt.
I'll have that later on.
So that we won't see anywhere than a public work salaries that reflect everything again, that it's all broken down?
Well, no, their salaries are, there's a sheet on what everybody makes, that sheet...
But that's not in our, in our budget, it's all broken down into each category.
Well, it doesn't, it doesn't give you like George's salary, it gives you how much, it could be Dave, it could be Boji, it could be whoever, doing grass. So we're just estimating, if we put a hundred hours into cutting grass at this rate, let's put this much money into recreation. If we think it's taken then three hours or two hours to change a fixture on a pole, and we think we're going to change a hundred fixtures, fixtures this year, let's put three hundred hours into street lighting.
But do they get paid out of the, maybe I'm confused, do they get paid out of the recreation budget?
Everything still gets paid out of the general fund.
Okay, okay.
That's why you'll see transfers.
That pie, that big pie.
But at the end of this, where we at, recreation?
Yeah.
See, it says transferred, last thing, transferred to general fund, twenty-five thousand dollars. That means the money from this account is being transferred to general fund to pay some of this stuff that we're talking about.
Okay.
Anybody have any other questions on recreation?
On the second page, and I brought this up at last, this must work, sir. Under miscellaneous donations, I tell you, I'd like to see a grant program whereby organizations and groups that could apply for some kind of a grant.
I'm looking for miscellaneous donations, I don't see it.
Isn't that what that is?
Fifty-five hundred dollars.
Miscellaneous donations?
Oh.
They set up a program where they have to apply by December thirty-first of the following year. And that way, you know how to work your budget, you know how many people applied, and you know, you don't have to deal with it during the course of the year. You know, if the parade committee wants twenty-five, let them fill out an application. And if somebody else wants a thousand for Historic Bristol Day, fill out an application. Then council makes a decision where the money goes. And then you don't deal with it for the rest of the year, and then you'll have it in the budget. This is miscellaneous, I mean, we don't know where that's going to go.
Well, I think we do.
It always goes to the same place, we always give the parade committees, and my only problem with that, Jimmy, is that I don't want to determine what the need factor is. I don't want to determine what the merit is. Do you know what, that's my concern, is again, I don't want to micromanage.
There ought to be some merit in giving away, you know, the money, I mean...
Can I say something to speak really blunt on this? I don't think we, we're in the business of giving money away. I mean, I know there's organizations out there, once we start a fund, you're going to have every organization in town, from mothers' association to applying for this grant, and everybody you turn down is going to walk out of here pissed off. We only give money to the parade committee, Historic Bristol Day, and I think that's it.
We give this planning group one year.
One year.
One year, yeah, but lately.
It was their...
You give it to senior center, you still give it to them.
Wait a minute, they came in, it was their first year, and they were trying to get up and running, and we gave them a donation.
I'm not criticizing that.
I don't think we should open this can of worms, or we're going to start giving, we're not a grant funding company.
I don't thought that. That was just my idea.
Anyway, you new guys, whoever, could speak on this, but you're going to have to deal with it. I think you're going to make a lot of hard feelings with people coming up here saying, "I want two thousand, I want five hundred, I want..." I don't think we're in the business of giving money away.
But they can still come up and ask for it, they don't...
But nobody does. Nobody, I've been up here ten years, nobody has come up here besides Historic Bristol Day, which they were doing before I came here, and the Christmas parade. The only other people we gave money to was the Puerto Rican parade, because it was a new organization that came up here, and I had no problem helping them get started.
No problem at all.
And the senior citizens came up, because they were going to close, and we told them, "The shops closed, they, I would never vote to give them money again." They got twelve thousand, Robin and Betty fought for them to get, and then another six. I mean, you talk about, you're opening a can of worms, my opinion, I don't know what everybody else feels.
Well, council makes the final decision, who you want to give it to and how much, so if you don't want to do it, that's fine, I just thought it was, it was an idea.
It is a good idea, but the thing is...
If you don't like it, that's fine, you know, I don't...
We're going to get into a foundation then.
Wow.
And you're going to have every organization that you could think of up here asking for money.
I just look here and see miscellaneous donations, and it sounds dangerous to me.
In that column, Jimmy, there's only fifty-five hundred dollars. And we already know twenty-five hundred is going to fifteen, or what do we give the parade committee?
Twenty-five hundred.
Fifteen hundred or twenty?
Twenty-five hundred.
Twenty-five, parade got twenty-five.
Twenty-five and a thousand to Historic Bristol Day. So you got two thousand, twenty-five hundred dollars left to put this grant program in that you're going to have eighty people, organizations fighting over. I don't think council will ever turn their back on somebody in need that came up here and said, "We need five hundred dollars," or we'd like, the baseball team that year that owned the states, we end up giving them five hundred dollars. That's something that I think we should do. But to start a grant program, I...
Okay.
I may be pissing people off, but that's just my opinion.
That's fine.
Now, we're in the business of running the town for the constituents of Bristol Borough.
Do we have anything else on recreation?
Did we ever get the sponsors, the sponsorship that sponsored the community pride event? Did that money ever come in?
I don't know what you mean.
Well, remember, they had, like, we're budgeting twenty-five thousand dollars, but we figured that there was going to be money coming from different sponsors, did that money ever actually...
We'll have that in your December packet, completing that, I mean, the budget got in the way of...
I mean, the budget got in the way of a lot of things.
Okay, so you don't know whether that money's actually, the checks have been written and the money's in the account?
Well, I know we're under the 25,000, but we're, we'll finalize it. This 17-208, is that what, Angie, we spent in, on the Community Pride? Or you don't know?
It's not, it's not closed out yet.
It's not?
I still, I just recently got one other bill the other day.
And Angie, does that include everything, porta-potties, trimming the trees, cleaning the, and, and we just asked, was almost on that subject, when, when the Borough does, because we do a great job in keeping the parking lot clean for all the festivals, how is that over time that the public works and the street sweeper in the parking lot, that just goes into the-
That goes into this-
That goes into parking.
That's that prize, prior page? Okay, okay.
Maintenance and salaries, 107,000.
Okay.
And that's the police also?
No, police would be separate, right?
I don't think so.
Yeah, that would be separate.
But that's, the things you just mentioned, Robin, is what we're trying to get a hand on.
No, it's smart. I mean, if you, it's going to cost you more money than what it's worth, you got to know that.
Anybody else on Recreation? Can you make sure, I'm sure Anna's doing this report, if we can add this for everybody's packet for December's meeting? All right, the Rescue Squad Fund. Again, you have your income and your expenditures. Should I talk about it, or you want to get me the letter? Just so everybody knows, the Rescue Squad has sent Borough Council a request that they're in dire need to buy, purchase another ambulance. And I think the, I wish you had, Jim had the letter for him, he was sent to me. The ambulance, I think, is 100 and some thousand dollars to purchase one.
You want it, Ralph?
Yeah, he had it.
He went and looked for it. It says, "As you are aware, the Bucks County Rescue Squad has served emergency medical needs of the Borough for nearly 80 years." Try to get through this without getting in, medical service. Throughout the years, we have been able to make ends meet. This one's over there, has been serious fleet issues that we need your assistance, which Bucks County Rescue Squad responds to nearly 4,000 emergency calls per year, including an average of 1,300 emergencies on a yearly basis in Bristol Borough, and we respond to those calls with the fleet of three ambulants. The two of our ambulants are 10 years old, one of those particular ambulants has nearly 100,000 miles on it, and is in desperate need of replacement. As it is a huge strain on the fleet maintenance budget, approximately 145,000, this critical replacement is but impossible due to fiscal constraints. I am asking the Bristol Borough Council to kindly consider an annual donation of $10,000 per year for five years, for a period of, for a total of $50,000 towards the purchase of this ambulance. We are your partners in the community, without hesitation, we participate in every event held in the Borough, without asking the sponsors or anybody for help, for a small donation to offset some of the expenses. With that said, we must be able to provide reliable equipment, not only to the event attendants, but also to each and every resident in Bristol Borough. That's summer 9/11 for emergency medical services. I understand that through tough financial times, we are, and I am more than willing to work with the Borough to come up with any alternative that will help us reach our ultimate goal, and that is to replace an ambulance. What they're saying is basically, they never, they do every event we, we hold, they're there, they respond to a lot of calls, and they're in dire need of an ambulance, they don't have the money. I don't know how this Borough can consider $10,000 a year-
I'm so glad you said that.
Donation for five years, or, I like to do something for them. I mean, I know, you know, and if, whatever the Borough does, they're going to go to Bristol Township, and tell Bristol Township that the Borough made a commitment of this, and we're asking you to do the same. If you would like them to come in and speak, they wanted to be here tonight, and I said, "Look, let me run this through council," and get everybody's opinion, what do you think?
Well, my own, and, you know, it's such a hot topic, I mean, who wants to turn down the Rescue Squad? God forbid tomorrow night I'll be calling 911, they'll be like, "Yeah, they turned out."
The ambulance broke-
"No, it's too old, we can't get to their house." I guess my concern in it, it probably is, is also associated with the theater. I'd like to see what other money, I know that the commissioners give them money, like, I know that these guys get money from other places, too. I guess what I'd like to see is a financial statement in terms of, you know, being, being accountable to us for how much money do you bring in, and then maybe we can come to, and the same with the theater, you know, how much money do you actually, it's great, they reach out to everybody, and they get money from everybody, so-
Since we're on this fund, I, I just, let's get through the budget, and we can make a recommendation on bringing them back, requesting more information, cutting something to-
Right.
-give them something. All right?
I'm not opposed to contributing, I just want to see what, what other money's they're bringing in to make sure this is-
The street lighting fund, basically, again, it shows you your income and your expenditures. I think the best thing we ever did was purchased this bucket truck and paid it off in a couple years.
Bucket truck again.
At 70.
And the street sweeper.
Yeah. Does anybody have any questions on the street lighting account? We're still in the process of changing all the street lights throughout the town. We had a program start.
Ralph, question here, halfway down the expenditures, under street light replacement, you budgeted 25,000 for this year.
Street lighting replacement, Pat?
Yes.
And other lights?
Halfway down the line, 25,000 is what you budgeted 2011. You're estimating, your, your estimation is that, that you're spending 15.
Right.
So, if, if for 2012, if anything, you should be going down.
Well, no, we didn't get a-
But you're budgeting more money for 2012, and you spent less money than your budget in 2000.
We didn't get a chance to change as many lights as we wanted to change.
Well, I mean, the, the, the budget is showing a $19,000 deficit. If you just knocked 10,000 off that, you did 15,000, you'd have 20,000 in there, and that deficit would be reduced by 10,000. What I'm saying.
We're still showing a surplus, don't remember, I mean, remembers, we're mandated by the federal government to be replacing these lights. We have to replace them, we just got a little slowed up this year.
Well, all I'm saying is, replace the same amount of lights next year that you replaced this year.
But we're still not showing a deficit as of 1231.
Well, regardless of what's there, I'm, I'm looking at the revenues, those expenses, which is for the 2012 budget, you're showing a $19,120 deficit. Well, I'm just, I'm just saying, if you reduce that by 20, by 220, by 10, you could reduce that deficit by 10. But if you don't want to do it, that's fine.
What I'm saying, Mr. Lutz, we still showing $126,000 surplus.
With your beginning balance?
Your ending balance as of 1231.
Well, beginning balance in January will be 145,000, 100 and...
If we spend-
You went from 126 to 145 to make up the 19,000. I understand what you did.
But we're still in very good shape in that account. If we change more lights, we're still nowhere near running a major-
It just, to me, it just seems like a lot of money to carry over from one year to another, to have that kind of fund balance.
We're hoping to change-
You're walking away with 126,000, either you collected too much money, or you didn't do enough work.
Well, if you look in 2010, we spent $98,000 on lights. So, depending on our guys, if they can get more lights in, and don't forget, we had nowhere to store this stuff with the new building, we're going to be able to purchase more lights and store them, and I think George also wants to install some additional lights along the path off of Jefferson Avenue, in that area, it's, it's pretty dark in that, that path, so. Greg, I know you might want to, do you have any questions, sir?
That was going to be my one direct question, that is, the lighting from walking, does this include new lights, I guess, for the class?
Yes.
Because the walk from the train station past the tennis courts, you know, into haringing, for instance, is pitch black.
Yeah.
So, I didn't know if that could be-
Well, that's what we're saying, if we have a surplus of 126,000 as of 1231, we may want to spend another 60,000 and change that number to 90, depending on if George can get to it, so.
The other question I had is, is a broader question, and I'm sure there's a simple answer, and it's a pretty simple question, but the $24 million that we, that we cut interest on, that's from the sale of the water plant?
Right.
Is that, is that money, are we just always going to be collecting in the interest?
Interest.
So, that money will, the 24 million will just remain in place forever?
Well, unless we change, we would have to do a resolution or change the ordinance. There was a lot of talk about taking the 24 million dollars and paying off the rink, and by paying off the rink, you would reduce the debt service, this alleviate this $660,000 payment every year. But the problem is, that would have been fine, like Pat said earlier, if we were getting this interest money, in, in years past, they were using that to do roads, they were using that to do special projects, now it became part of the operating budget. So, if you take 10 million, we're just saying, out of the budget, and reduce your interest by 400,000 or 500, you need to make up that 400,000 or 500,000 to put into the general fund. So, we had meetings with the, what was her name? Auditor General, not the auditor general.
Robin Weisman?
Robin Weisman, who took over for the treasurer, and what we explained to her was, the 24 million only could be invested through Borough Code or State Code. So, we just can't say tomorrow, we want to go buy Cisco, or we want to buy a certain stock. It's basically in Jenny Mays, Fannie Mays, all the things that really crashed. And we said to her, the 24 million dollars 10 years ago, we could do, what Herbie was saying earlier, so much with it. Every year, that 24 million dollars is in growing to keep up with inflation. Why don't you allow us to reposition this money and see if we can do better, like, right now, we're only getting maybe 1%, 1 and 1/2% on 24 million.
That's why I asked, and that is, is there a time when it's, obviously, when interest rates are high, it's a beautiful thing.
Exactly.
When they're low, it's-
And we locked in, well, eight years or nine years ago, we locked into some long-term stuff that gave us good money, because interest rates were high, but now, we're locking in for six months at a time, because who wants to lock in at 1% or 1 and 1/2%?
Right.
So, that's why I said last month, I like to bring our financial people in, when you guys get in in January, February, March, and start letting do presentations on the money, but it's really, I mean, Mr. Dillon, when I get to general fund, I'm going to go through where we saved a lot of money in insurances and stuff like that, but it's a complicated picture to understand, but-
I certainly agree that to be fiscally responsible with that money, you don't want to just say, "Hey, you know what, I'm spending..." But, in a, in a, I'm just, I'm just thinking out loud, I'm not saying I, I have the answer or that, how I necessarily feel about the long-term idea, but when interest rates are so low, it just makes you wonder, is there a better time than not to maybe look at?
Right. See, I even said, it would have been nice if we could have taken our money, loaned it to the school district-
Right.
-when they were building the school, and collect, they're paying, I don't know, maybe 4% or more on their loan, we're only getting 1%.
Right.
We're not allowed, this money's really restricted on how you can, or what you can do with it.
Okay.
So, and that's something I think we need to have discussion on come, you know, next year. You know, maybe we do a resolution and figure, is it worth it to pay off the rink, since we're only getting 1%? But then again, you can't give the money back to the tax. It all comes down to, you have one fund of money, and if you take it from here, it's like if you budget 200 hours a month for your electric item, and this month, your electric came in at 150, you don't have an extra $50 in an envelope somewhere. It's just, doesn't work that way. And that's why I'm saying, the statement that we, you know, you take money here, you should give it back, it's impossible. You got to look at the overall budget, and as long as you stay within that, that budget, we're doing a good job.
Yeah, and I'm not, I'm not insinuating that you're not, I'm just, I think the 24 million is something that-
We should have discussion on it next year.
Right, you hear that number thrown out, and I don't think a lot of people actually understand what that means, especially when, when, when it was a great thing, when interest rates were so high, it was definitely, obviously, fiscally irresponsible, and it's still fiscally responsible, just wondering out loud what, if that changes when interest rates are so low.
And the problem came when they started to use the interest for the operating to balance a budget. If that money could have been held aside for improvements in the town, that would have been great, but rather than raise taxes, Pat, previous administrations used that interest to balance the budget, which is a shame, because even at 600,000, if we had that every year, you know, it would be nice to have, but-
Exactly, thank you.
Okay.
Now, but getting back to that money that Greg was talking about, doesn't that have to do with a referendum bill?
Right. Yep.
And the other thing-
So, in order to get that money, the whole town has to move along.
Right.
And if, if there is money in the budget, I wondered if perhaps we could look into putting lights, you know, where the, the path is, what?
Have you ever thought about the dog path?
No, I have not.
I'm on Jesus.
No, around where, across from where Kevin's is, that field, and the bike path goes around that way, next to Grundy, but oh my goodness, it's so dark back there, so maybe just two street lights would be, you know what I mean, right, George? Okay.
All right, our special roads. I don't think anything's jumping out that... Do we have any questions on, just page one?
Just basically, how many handicaps are we going to try to grab this year, or this upcoming year? Do you have any idea?
Put the 25,000 in.
Just plug away at it.
And the good thing is, our guys, and with your dad's help, and we're now starting-
Yeah, these guys are doing it.
We're really now starting to learn the system, and maybe next year, it was very hard without a Borough building, because our equipment's spread into three locations.
Yeah, a lot of things will change.
A lot of things will change next year when they're organized and... Do they have any questions on the special roads?
Uh-uh.
Okay, Capital Improvement Fund. If you look at the revenues coming in for the, most of it's being spent on the building. Look at 2012, the Walmart contribution is being pushed into 12, because they didn't start yet. And on the expenditure side, if you look at 2012, we're basically only budgeting the money to finish the construction of the project and Architect and Engineer Fund. Besides that, everything else is zeros. Does anybody have any questions on that account?
Just one, Ralph. Under Congress- Under congressional grant, says a million, congressional grant, says a million dollars on the revenue?
Right.
Should that be 910,000?
No, the grant was for a million dollars. We received...
But you got 910.
Right, so we still have money to apply for. If we may get it, we may not get it.
So shouldn't that 90,000 go in the 2012 proposed budget?
Well, no, we're waiting to see what happens at the end of this year.
So you may not get the 90.
We hope to get the complete million dollars before the end of the fiscal year.
If not, we'll either show 90 for next year, or they'll pass the 4910, or, what did they pass?
910,000, so many dollars and so many cents.
Already.
910.
As of October, so we hope to be able to get a, another invoice into them this month.
And they've been pretty quick in sending the checks out. Okay, anything else on the capital improvement budget? Aid and liquid fuel, that was for the road program. You see our contribution coming in at $170,000, and our obligation is 113,000. We're transferring money to the general fund for other things that George does through the year.
So Ralph, that 46, I highlighted the transfer to general fund labor, that's exactly what you refer to her, but is, that's the labor, the same way that you're breaking down? Okay, all right.
We're not projecting to buy any equipment for the roads, I mean, our roads are all in good shape. I don't think there's a road that you'll never get a pothole in or something like that, so. Anybody have any questions? And our liquid fuel money, I mean, there was statements made that it's not enough to cover the roads. Our liquid fuel money is more than enough, and it shows you right here that there's enough money in this account to maintain these roads. Do we have any questions? Our investment fund. If you look, this is the money that's on the 24 million, our interest this year for 2012, we're projecting $600,000. And in '08 was a million 65. As of now, we took in 700,000, we're projecting at the year-end, and we budgeted 850. So that's $150,000 less going into the general fund than we originally budgeted, but through some cuts and some savings, we were able to balance last year's budget, and I'll go through that in the general fund. And hopefully, that this 600,000 doesn't become 300,000. I mean, who knows what can happen? We're hoping that the economy, next year's a presidential election, hopefully that interest rates turn around maybe and start coming up, and who knows? I mean, if we knew, we'd all be rich, I guess, sitting here, we go make investments.
Ralph, I'm going to ask a silly question. Why did the custodial fees go from 2,800 to 15,000? And I highlighted this home, and I thought the custodial fees was on cleaning the building, and I wondered why it was, but why, why is there such a big jump?
Want to explain that, Jim?
Angie, is that 2,800 accurate, in your mind, at 28, or should that be 28,000?
Yes.
2,800?
Yes.
The custodial fees are first. You want me?
This, this is what we pay the pligot for managing the funds and doing the investments on the 24 million. But Angie, is that 2,800 correct?
Yeah, the pligot, they, if you look at the statement, they already take it out into the, into their statement. If, I do, I bounced to two statements, and you bounced to the US Bank, and it shows that the custodial fees, 2,800.
But we budgeted in 2011, when you budgeted 30,000, as of 930, we've only spent 2,047. So it seems logical that you would only go to 15,000 in the 2012, correct?
15,000.
Right.
Angie, why don't you look into that? That's a good point.
They're taking their fees directly out.
They are taking directly out, that's why. They're taking their fees directly out of their money.
Where, before, we had to write them a check?
Right, no, I would actually post, look at the statement. I'll show Mr. Dorn tomorrow, and we can get back to you.
What I think Angie's saying is, we used to pay them, and now they're deducting their fees. And again, when we bring them in, that's a good question to ask them, what do you do for the $30,000 a year that you charge us? All right, the street cleaning fund, refuse fund. Again, the biggest expense in here is trash removal, which the budget, we've been holding at 1,190,520 a year to pick up trash, and real estate taxes that are taken in. Our expenditures is...
That's the 300,000.
That's right. And the 1186, 601 is the contract for trash removal.
Ralph, under miscellaneous revenues, what are state grants? What do we get grants for?
To recycle and you apply for different miscellaneous grants.
And then what, under the grand total revenues, the, the trash removals, what?
Grand total revenues?
Mm-hmm.
Say it's trash removal.
Mm-hmm.
That's the 42,000 we're budgeting?
Well, no, that, we're budgeting 6,000. And again...
2012 for 2011. That's, I think, dumpsters and, what is that, George?
Or Jim?
Or Angie?
Trash removal, that was additional dumpsters because of the hurricane and, and some additional, you know, like cleanup yard and the street sweeper.
All right. Don't forget, we have nowhere to dump anything right now, because the pile of trash is now finally gone. Everything has to be put in dumpsters. There's no leaves, there's no, we can recycle, that's what them bins are for.
But I think the concern is, the 2011 budget, we budgeted 9200, we spent 23,000 as of the, we anticipated 42,000 by the end of this year, and then we're only budgeting 6,000.
I...
Is that going to be adequate? I mean, in the event that we have another storm or next year?
I think part of that, we broke it down, and we set up a specific account starting next year called Sweeper Dumpster. So I think that's the correlation, say, the 30,000 plus the 6, as it relates to the 42,000. And do you see that, Rob?
Oh, okay, all right, I see it, Jim.
42,000, we've broken it up into two separate accounts.
Okay. And can you just say, why, why do we need Sweeper Maintenance this year when we haven't budgeted in the past? Is our warranty up on that?
No, we were taking out of the general fund, Public Works Department, so we've established an actual account within the Refuge, the Street Cleaning Fund, the Street Sweeper. So again, we've tried to isolate, you know, the, the actual cost by establishing this account. This is a new account, Sweeper Maintenance, plus it is getting older.
Does anybody have any questions on the Refuge account?
Ralph, one of these, a couple of them, well, there's $30,000 here in Sweeper dumpsters.
Jim just explained...
Can't, can't, I know that, can't we just put that in a dump truck and take it up to the groves?
Street...
Whatever, whatever a sweeper collects.
Right.
Can't we just put it in a dump truck and take it up to groves?
Are you, are you...
Or we pay somebody else to do it?
Because they could fill a dumpster in one weekend, our trucks aren't big enough to handle.
How big are the dumpsters compared, George, how big, how big are the dumpsters compared to the back of the dump truck?
Well, let me just, before you answer that question, you've got to understand, the hauling of a dumpster is the cheap part. I think it's like $150 drop off and pickup, which, by the time we put a driver, even, let's just say this whole thing works, by the time you pay a driver and gas on a $150 charge, most of the cost is to dump it. So we could look at it both ways, but I think it's cheaper to take it out in dumpsters.
And those, those trucks, Jimmy, they line up that you wait, you could spend, right, George? You could spend an hour in a line up at groves way...
If you look at our, if you want to look at a dumpster slip, Jimmy, from the borough, when they bill you, they bill you so much a ton for, for dumping, and a fee for hauling, it says removal and replacement. So it's probably $150 or, I don't even know if it's that much.
That's what it is.
$75 each way. I mean, I think we would spend more than that, sending our guy there and sitting in line.
All right, then we have, we have $10,000 for trash receptacles. On the next page, page two, it's top.
Is that for the recycle ones, Jim?
No, this is...
Miscellaneous trash receptacles.
Oh, okay.
It's a budget amount for possible new trash cans at various places throughout the town.
For downtown. There are them $800 ones.
I was going to say, didn't we have a big fight about that one year?
I'm glad Merle, Merle's sitting here, because he's laughing. If we didn't have the $800 trash cans, Merle, where would they all be?
Yeah, Philly.
They'd be in Philly, Merle said. Because when we had the flood, they would have went out with the, Merle said, thank God you guys bought them good trash cans, or they'd be down in Philly right now.
That's right.
What else, Jimmy?
That's it.
Any other questions on this Refuge budget?
Wait, Ralph, let me try one more.
Go ahead.
On page, on page two, recycling containers, that's 6,500.
Thousand.
Thousand.
6,500, my bad. 6,500. Now, recycling rebates on the front page is only 1,500.
Right.
Isn't there another way to do that?
No.
It doesn't seem like it makes sense to me that...
No, this 6,500 is to purchase all-new recycle cans for every borough resident in town, because they're so, we have them...
Everybody in town's going to get a new, new can.
Well, it's something we're going to talk to about next year, but we have cans that people come in right now and buy, but with the new recycle programs, and we might be going to single stream.
I was thinking about some completely different. That's fine. That's fine.
You want me to finish? If we go to single stream recycle, recycle, the cans aren't big enough, so we've got to go to a round rubber can, and you can't expect the borough residents, it wouldn't be fair to say, you know, you've got to buy this new can. I mean, so I think we should purchase the can, especially for seniors, and give them a new one, right?
Right.
That's right.
For seniors.
Okay. Any other questions? Our sewer fund budget basically is adopted through the Sewer Authority, and we have nothing to do with that. It's a, something that we just adopt during our budget. But if somebody has a question in the sewer fund, we'd be glad to answer it.
I have to ask you, I noticed, and I'm just wondering where in our, it's not so much on the sewer fund, but we're under the sewer fund administration, it shows engineering fees and legal fees. Is there any place within this budget that engineering fees would be broken down? Into, or are they each in, in each category? In other words, the public works, building, engineering fees would be in that, and...
Engineering fees?
For the sewer you're talking?
Well, no, now, I'm, it's separate for the borough. What would our engineering fees be for the year?
That's in the general fund.
And is that in one category, Jim? I didn't see it. Okay.
All right, what I'm going to do is, it's 8:30, take a five-minute recess, and we'll... Anybody have any questions up to this point? Do we get into the general fund? Because I think that's nine or 11 pages.
Nine.
Let's take a five-minute recess. Meeting after a 10-minute recess. We're going to start on the general fund. Basically, we'll go through the revenue first. You have your real estate taxes, it shows you what you collect. Miscellaneous taxes, Grundy, these are things that we get money in, D transfers, utility, occupational privilege tax, license and permits, alarms, beverage, building permits, plumbing permits, street permits, miscellaneous permits, fire inspection, rental registrations, industrial, commercial, building inspections, and you can just keep following it down. Then you have all your, on page three of nine, you have all your transfers. That ties in your street lighting, recreation, sewer, refuse, debt service, liquid fuel, and street reconstruction. Since everything is paid out of the general fund, if you see, now, everything comes back to this general fund account, which gets you, we budgeted in 2011, 4,423, and we're projecting year-end at 4,540, which is, we're doing better on our revenue than expected. So before we get into anything else, why don't you look at the revenue, and if we have any questions for that?
Ralph, I just, I have one. At the bottom of the first page, rental registrations.
Right.
Rental registrations.
Right.
It, it occurred to me, and it's, it's really a pretty big concern, that we're getting more and more rentals in town. Do we have a number, or can we get, somebody to give us a number, maybe of comparing, how many rentals?
Exactly.
Huh?
We know exactly how many we have.
How many do we have as we speak?
Oh, I couldn't answer. If I had to guess, maybe 1,600.
1,600. How many did we have last year, do you know?
No.
When we started the rental registration, I think we had 1,500.
How many?
Forget, we're still catching people that don't have their properties registered as rentals.
I think we had 1,500, Jim.
15?
That's what I thought we had when we started our rental registration.
It may have been a lot less than that, too. It may have been 11, 1,200. Let's just say we're up to 1,600.
Seems the complexion of town is, is changing, and I'm not sure that's a good thing. I mean, like, it's, it's good that we're getting rental registration money, but it seems the economy is just taking, taking its toll on, on our, people are renting places because they can't sell them.
Right.
Right.
But you can't stop.
So that means, we're, we're going to give up the, the transfer taxes on selling the property.
You can see it. You can see that difference.
And we're going to pick up the registration. Not, not that we can do anything about it.
That's what I was going to say, what's...
I don't think we can. I...
Can't stop somebody from renting their property.
No.
The only... The only thing we need to do, and again, next year, I'm gonna get into this, we went to every other year for rental inspections, and I don't know if that was a good thing or not. I think that a lot of properties are starting to get more rundown, 'cause back to the absentee landlord who doesn't care about their property, or just care, they only care about collecting.
That's gonna get worse.
Paycheck, and everybody was in favor of, you know, spending this hundred dollars a year for rental, it's too much money, and I end up going along with everybody on that, which I was against it. I think it should've been every year you need to inspect your property.
But you had one and a half inspectors, now you only got one.
Well, even if you gotta put somebody on, I think the appearance of the town is more important than the budget right now, and I think that when we went to every other year, it's giving absentee landlords more of an opportunity to, to let these places run down, and there's a lot of properties throughout town right now that are being rundown.
But let's be honest, though, they're not all rental properties.
No, there's a lot of homeowners, too.
Some of them are owner occupants.
But there's nothing we can do with owner occupied, except cite them for high grass and things like that. I mean, that's a discussion for next year, but I think we really need to look at putting another inspector on, generating enough income for him, and maybe going back to, or reward, maybe reward somebody by saying, we came out and your property's never had any major complaints, therefore, we'll give you, maybe not charge them. I don't know what it is, and tonight's not the night to get into that, but we need to really start looking at these rental properties.
But I think you'll find that, that the school tax and the increases have really had an effect on our rental properties, because what happens is that people that rent houses, and they're paying more and more money in taxes, they have less and less money to spend to fix their houses up.
But that's the price of doing business, Jim.
Well, I don't know what it is, but I'm looking at the outcome.
I mean, you wanna be a landlord, my theory is, and I'm a landlord, I own property, just like you do. You wanna be a landlord, that's the price of doing business. Either you get good rent, you get better people in your property, and you maintain your property better.
It's also for the homeowners, too, they, I mean, they don't have to necessarily be a rental.
What do you mean for the homeowner?
Well, if his taxes are going up, the school tax is going up drastically in the last two or three years. He's got, the homeowner's got less money to spend.
Yeah, but we're not, we're not going after the homeowner, we're going after the person.
Yeah, but, but you're going after people who's, who's letting their properties go. And you can't just say, well, it's just absentee landlords.
I'm not saying just absentee landlords, what I'm saying is, we have a lot of people that don't live in this town that own property in this town that don't care what they look like, or we have realtors in this town that rent them to people that don't care who they're renting them to, just to make a dollar, that's what it comes down to. I'm not gonna have somebody sitting in a property that tries to maintain their property, I've been on this for 10 years from the day I got sworn in. I'm not gonna have a person that's been in their property for 70 years or more, living next to a pig that's renting a property. Our job is to protect the people of this town, and if it means cracking down again on absentee landlords, I'm gonna do that next year, and I'm gonna ask council for their support.
It's certainly, certainly.
And if they get tired of paying the $100 fee and sell the property, then we'll deal with somebody else.
And we'll get the transfer tax.
And we'll get the transfer tax. So, if you go through all your, your revenue, you could see where everything's coming in. Okay? Now, we get into expenditures on page, anybody have anything on income? 'Cause I'm gonna refer back to that a few times, I have some things that I wanna go through this. On page three basically gives you council, mayor, administration. If you can see in. No, we're gonna be fine there. Anybody have any questions up to page three? Okay, page four. Is basically your postage, your engineer, Robin, there's engineering, say it, $40,000. Now, that's, if we do a special project, apparently that'll change.
Right.
But that's just general.
But that's not bad, though.
Engineering for the year.
That's not bad at all.
I don't see anything in here for Jim's reams of paper.
What's that? All right, let's turn to page, anybody on four? Let's turn to page five.
I have a question, Ralph, concerned.
Which page?
On page five, under police.
I was gonna try to get into that budget, do you have anything up before the police budget, Jimmy?
No.
Bobby?
Building repair and maintenance, that's, that's just basically maintenance on this building.
Yeah, basically, we put a number in, trying to maintain little, any little thing that might broke, break. I mean, all our buildings now are pretty much up to par.
Right.
And we have a capital outlay for building maintenance, if something major went, we got $45,000.
And the numbers.
Put aside for that.
The numbers all add up to what they were in the last, since 2010, really.
Okay.
2011.
Now, let's get into the police budget, which is on page five and page six.
All right, my concern, Ralph, within the last six months, we've hired three part-time police officers. And I voted in favor of hiring this part-timer. And it was my understanding that the purpose of hiring, or one of the, the main purpose of hiring a part-time police officer was to reduce overtime. Now, if you look at this, your part-time salaries went up from the year-end estimate of 76,622 to 130,992. That's a $50,000 increase in part-time salaries.
Right.
Then you have an increase in police overtime from 94 to 96. You know, if you're gonna increase the part-time employee's salary, then the overtime needs to go down. Can't be both.
Well, it really didn't, it really didn't go up.
What didn't go up?
Let me, while you're, I'm glad you brought that up, because you're talking about overtime, which as of date, we spent $64,000 on, you follow me? We budget 94, we spent 64,487, right? You follow me?
And the estimate's at 94.
The estimate is at 94, but if you go back to page two of nine, and you look at account number 35801001, it says county reimbursement for police. As of today, we received $55,186. So, out of that, $64,000, $55,000 was reimbursed so far. So, we only spent $9,000 in actual overtime to this point, which I think Arnie's doing an outstanding job on.
Well, then, then maybe, maybe we shouldn't have hired the part-timers then. If you're gonna get reimbursed for the overtime by county.
The reimbursement is for narcotics, narcotics and things that they're doing that generates the overtime. So, everybody always looks at this number and saying, and I've been trying to explain this to you for years, we're spending $100,000 in overtime. Most of the overtime that is generated in this borough is for special assignments. Most of it's drug work that's reimbursable. Now, we already spent 64, we took in.
55.
55, we're projecting to take in maybe 56, maybe 58, 'cause when me and Arnie met the other day. So, you can't really say that, I mean, the cops are make, look, they're making the money, you can't, I'm not saying they're not getting, their paychecks, paycheck isn't increased for overtime, but we're, we're getting a lot of this money back, and I don't know if that's a number or a line item, maybe the mayor and the chief need to look at it and say, should we put overtime in normal and overtime in reimbursement? But I think if you just read the budget correctly, and you go to county reimbursement for police and subtract that number, it's really not a bad, $9,000 isn't bad for the year in overtime.
But I guess my question would be, and, and this just comes from ignorance, then why would we propose a budget in 2012 of 96,820 again?
Because that's what we're projecting to do in overtime.
Do we take into account what will be reimbursed at all with that, when you do it? Okay.
County reimbursement, we're putting $50,000 in 2012, on page three, two of nine, Robin.
Then, then I don't know how the, the part-time went up 50,000.
Well, the part-timers went up double because, well, it went up from, say, 80 to 130 is 50,000, 'cause we added three time part-timers from two.
Yeah, but, but you budgeted for 2011, 75, 74,620, and you're, you're within your budget at 76,622, and these guys have been working.
Yeah, but don't forget, we budgeted last year when we had more part-timers, and we lost two of them.
And they're in training right now, they're working their two-man car.
Right. Don't forget, Maria left and somebody else got promoted to, or two people left or somebody got promoted. Or we would've been way under budget if we didn't hire the three, now that we hired the three, we're actually occurring more expense because they're training with another cop, they're not on their own.
And they'd be, and so they're working more now than they would normally work, okay, that makes sense.
We're also paying you to train me. So, basically, once I learned, then I'm on my own.
Training you're getting.
That's right.
Question, Mr. President, how long does it usually take for a trainee to go from day one to day when he's driving, and he can shackle, and he can issue tickets, stuff like that, how long? What's the time period?
There's a training process, and, and sometimes it goes up three, four months. And we're still, we're still shadowing the officer during that time. You don't really get comfortable till you hear about a year, but they're on, they'll be on their own shortly.
Okay. See? Then that makes up for when summer hits.
Right.
And everybody's taking vacations, this is when this comes into effect.
Now, the other thing is, and I said this before, we invest a lot of money in hiring a part-time cop and training him and everything else, and then if he leaves, we basically, we spend a lot of money for nothing, but that's the nature of hiring. That's why I was always in favor of more full-time cops than part-time cops.
And one of the things is, in Bristol Borough, they learn it from A to Z.
Right, and then they're wanted everywhere in the county.
Yeah, because they know how to do from A to Z.
Right.
If they go to some other township or municipality, they only do B or C. But in Bristol Borough, they do A to Z, 'cause that's how it was for these guys.
Jimmy, anything else?
The mayor.
Can we explain that pretty good to you? Jimmy, you okay with that? Anybody else on that? I, I have a couple of things, if you don't. I want you to look at, on page five, the medical insurance. We budget in 2011, $530, $530,000. And we, as of today, we spent 280, we're projecting to spend 342, which is, I think, 195, is that what it is off the top of my head? $195,000 less in medical benefits due to the fact when we renegotiated that contract, we took everybody off personal choice and put them on HMO, changed deductibles, and we were able to save the borough a couple hundred thousand dollars just in medical insurance. That was, you know, some good planning and a lot of negotiations to make that work. And on the pension side, if you notice, we're going to come in at 248 instead of 287, which we budgeted, because there's also money coming in from them now. So, I met with the chief the other day for a couple hours. We really cut this budget, I think as much as you can cut it, Arnie. As of, what, Tuesday, we took another 148,000 out of the, 170,000 out of the budget. I don't know where else you can, you can make any cuts. I think the biggest thing was the medical, we saved money on, salaries are gonna go up based on the contract. Part-timers are going up based on, you know, the three new part-timers, and that's not giving them a full 35 hours. And I don't really look at the overtime that much, because I look at the county reimbursement versus the actual, and it's really not costing the borough a lot of money in overtime.
I agree, I think when you factor in the county money.
Yeah, I mean, they're not.
It's not, not, it's no longer.
And this 12-hour shift, I think is saving money. I still wanna go, I think we need to review it, Bobby, and we talked about that after the first of the year, to see if we can sit down with Arnie again and come up with, if there's more ways to cut or more ways to save money. I think that's something we're always looking, looking at doing. On page six of nine, if you look at vehicle maintenance and operation, some of the cars and stuff are getting a little older, so we're increasing some of that cost there. Gasoline, we think we're gonna be able, since we're putting in our own gas station this year, we think we're gonna be able to save some money there. We only lowered it $6,000, but if things go good, we feel we can maybe save $10,000 to $15,000 by buying, buying everything, right? I don't see anything else that jumps out that's.
Police debt capital outlay.
What's that, Pat?
410600.
That's for a new car.
Okay.
I think, you know, we didn't buy one in 11, knock on wood, right now, we get through, last time we said that, we totaled it in December. But.
We're gonna go for a car, for a truck?
Hopefully, we get through there, Arnie feels that we're gonna need one in 2012, and he wanted to keep the 35,000 in.
Car, truck?
Truck.
Not before he buys, does he come to us, or is it, okay, okay.
Arnie, you like the trucks?
We don't have to vote on it, 'cause it's in the budget, but he.
We have three now.
Lets us know what's going on.
Okay.
Arnie, what Robin is saying is, although it's in your budget, we would like to know if you're gonna buy one and what it is. Just don't purchase it without contacting somebody.
This has to borough, Pennsylvania Borough bids, right?
Yes. It's under the state bid list.
State bid list.
We, we don't just go to a car dealer, there's a, an agency that bids for the whole state of Pennsylvania and says, this is the car you can buy at this price, and every police department that wants this, whatever it is, can purchase it.
Co-star list.
Pardon me?
On the co-stars, the state list.
Right, it's on the state bid list. A lot of things we purchase, we purchase right off the bid list, so we just, it's easy to do. Doesn't matter what it costs, it's already been approved through the state. So, we're projecting next year of spending 2617 in our police budget, which if you look at the total tax dollars taking in, what is that, Jim, two? What, what's our total taxes, real estate taxes? What is it, Angie?
$2,155,000.
$2,155? So, if you look at it, really, our police budget is $500,000 more than our total taxes that are taken into this town. The way we make this work is by balancing the budget with other sources of income. with other sources of income. So when everybody understands this, how this works, you understand our police budget is more than all tax dollars taken in through real estate taxes.
So basically, if we had a pie, how much of the pie is police budget, is for the police budget?
50% or more, 55%?
Fifty-five, six.
Then we get, how we balance the budget is through revenue from the interest earnings, through permits, through all the other things that make up the other $2.5 million.
Police has been and always has been the biggest chunk of the general fund.
Right. Full time police department and...
But it's needed.
But if you look on the bottom of page six, you get into fire, uniforms, fire police, which doesn't amount to much money. If anybody has any questions. Anybody else on the police department before?
Ralph, I just have one question. There's, there's gas, electric, and motor expenses under the fire department, and then there's the same item under like the general fund on the page at the beginning, page five, and then it's on page seven. There's like a general line item for gas, whether an electric, and then there's a separate line item under the fire budget.
Unless this is for Tony Riquelos' fire department downstairs?
Yes.
Yeah, that's for the...
That's for their, probably being metered separate.
Okay.
We know what's going on. We're putting that towards paying some of our bills. And I think it's for also the Aaron Fox room, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, on page seven of nine. Our solicitor thinks we're still going to have to continue, Billy, with this codification?
That's what's where council authorized the updating of the subdivision of land development ordinance, so that's big work normals.
Right, so that's why they're still, we're budgeting 12.5 this year.
And what does the 12.5 go to, Ralph?
We have a codification ongoing with the overall borough ordinances themselves. Hopefully that'll be completed, say, by March of next year. And also, we have an ongoing, separate updating of our subdivision land development ordinance that council approved. We had a proposal from the county planning commission, as well as Gilmore, and council elected to go with the Gilmore proposal. So that's the, that's the two items that come on, come in under the codification.
And that would be legal fees and engineering fees?
I was just, uh, no, well, Mr. Salerno is working with the engineering department on the land development subdivision, so his fees would come in under the solicitor's fees themselves. But the, the engineering, it was our engineering department which has planners and landscape architects, whatever, they submitted a proposal to update our ordinance, our land development subdivision ordinance. So that's what we're talking about. That is independent of the normal general engineering expense that's reflected in the prior category, previous category.
It's a separate contract.
Okay.
So where are we on page seven?
Yeah.
Sorry. Okay, if you start looking at each item going down, your code enforcement and planning administrator, code enforcement, assistant code enforcement, we didn't add anything in there to hot, to replace Rory this year. Again, that's something council have to decide next year if they want to increase inspections and maybe put somebody on. Just trying to go down to see if there's any.
I see that we're not budgeting for landmark towns or classic towns?
I said to Mr. Dillon, again, that's up to council, but I think we should get out of both classic towns and landmark towns. That's my opinion. If anybody wants to add it back in, I mean, I think when we hired, hired them, they did a good job, but I don't foresee this thing doing a lot more than what they already did.
I just think that it's too tight. We have too many concerns. We've cut out a lot of expenditures, and I think you just, that's, this is the cost effective cutting that Jimmy referred to, so it's just not there.
Can I make a suggestion, Mr. DeJesup? Getting back to Rory's replacement and if we do need the second code enforcement officer, maybe everybody in the wards, the councilmen in each ward should go up and down the street and come up with consensus, maybe have a meeting, special meeting. Is the town getting run down? Are the rental units taking over? Are they making a disgrace on the town? And then we have to go after them if it is.
Right. See, what was...
If I, like, you know, the winter's coming, a lot of people going hibernation.
Right.
Snow covers a lot. But at the same time, I think by April, we should have a plan.
Oh, definitely.
And that plan should be, listen, we're going to start the inspections again. And if you're a good real estate provider for your renters, you should be granting a gift, okay? But if you're not, there are people we have to go after. We have to keep these guys on their toes.
I think that...
There are good rental people and there are trashy rental.
I think Rory did a good job because he drove around town a lot, and he found a lot of things that we don't see as councilmen. You know, we get home from work at night, I mean, you know, most of the times we're running here, running there, and, but during the day, he rode around, he handled them nuisance complaints that we don't, we're doing right now, but we're only reacting to phone calls. We're not being proactive. Where when Rory was here, he was more proactive. He rode around all day looking, basically looking for things to keep the town, like, yell at dad, went by, there were mattresses thrown out on the street. Trash day isn't until tomorrow. These mattresses been out all weekend.
I had a confrontation with the people from Danus' Market over that. They threw their, they had mattresses in.
Right near the...
The administration building.
That's another one.
I told the guy, I said, trash day is Friday. Put it back in, but he never did.
No, they just, and you know, you get people coming into our town for the weekend or for Thanksgiving, holidays, parades, and people got mattresses leaning against the telephone pole.
And Rory knew this town. He knew this town.
Keep them in the yard.
And he knew the problem people.
Until trash day. I mean, this is what, this is the aggravating part that we deal with. And people say, I can't believe them mattresses are out there. Well, you know, it isn't like we knew it, but again, it's, you need to take pride in your own town.
It's your responsibility.
Exactly. If somebody moves out at the end of the month and they fill the sidewalk with trash and they're gone, and then we're dealing with trash on the street until trash day the following week.
And it's a reflection of the street. The whole street looks bad because somebody did an apartment clean out and left all their stuff on the floor.
And then from the street, it becomes a reflection of the town.
A town, a town. It's a crappy town.
So basically, I think landmarks town, I'm glad you pointed that out, Robin, landmark towns and classic towns. I mean, look, it's 12.5. I don't think it's needed anymore. But if, again, if people think it should be put in, it's only a budget. We could always add it during the year, or do we have to do? On the bottom of page nine is just a couple items that we put in for road and control and stuff like that. If you turn to page eight of nine, you get into the street and highway salaries, and I'm sure George is tired and wants to go home and been here all night. I should have did this earlier. But basically, went through his budget with him and Mr. Dillon again, and Angie, they put with, you know, they went in with whatever they think they're going to need. If you look under snow removal, we're hoping, snow and ice removal, we're hoping, we only spent $30,000. It's been a beautiful November, and hopefully we get through December, and we got $29,000, we would be under budget.
Does that count for the overtime for George's group?
We spent $59,000, I'm sorry.
Yeah, we budgeted 30.
$19,000, $29,000 over. So we put $40,000 in next year.
George, what's the prediction this year?
No.
Ralph, vehicle maintenance and operation, $30,000. Is that to purchase or is that?
Uh, just...
Maintenance, okay.
Maintenance. Does anybody have any questions? George is here if you need to...
I feel like I should ask a question, George, because you waited around all this time, but I got nothing.
George is looking, excuse me, for two long term purchases. One's a Baco that's about 25 years old, and the other is the sewer truck, which is about 30 some years old, but it's something that he feels he can get by with the existing equipment next year, but it's his two major purchases that we have to start looking at, as well as, I guess somewhere down the line, is the replacement for the street sweeper. Other than that, the first two are not at all in any of the budgets, but, so there's no, you know, vehicles to be purchased as proposed, you know, again, trying to keep the, no taxing.
George, I think definitely we should be looking into a new sewer truck. I mean, guys are out there at night, there's not the proper lighting and flat, I mean, all the new trucks now have all the bells and whistles, you know, the pumps are better, and I don't know how these guys do it out in the cold, and with the truck that they have, it's really amazing that...
What year is that truck?
Eighty-four.
Eighty-four. He gets his money worth, he gets his money worth out of his...
I mean, you know, we got the facility now that everything's going to be kept inside, and I think we should look at that, maybe if we have to do a capital improvement.
What are they running, what are they running through?
They're running, we're from the, you know, 125,000 on the, don't need nothing fancy, we just do something.
And you're definitely, our Baco is probably barely making it.
It's costing us a lot of money every year. I mean, we have a schedule repairs coming on it before the winter.
Thank God we bought that little skid, that machine.
That's not for selling.
Yeah.
A lot.
Took a lot of wear and tear off the Baco.
Okay.
Uh, anybody have any questions for George or anything with that street and highway budget?
Um, no. Is that nine of nine? Are we there yet?
Eight of nine.
Okay, then no.
Vehicle gasoline goes 0, 0, 0 to 18,000. That's for the new, that's what?
Pardon me, Pat?
Vehicle gasoline, just a little idea.
We're just trying to separate the items.
All right. I guess we're trying to put gas into each category with these new tanks. Anybody have any questions on page eight of nine? On page nine of nine, see how we're taking the deficit, using up some of the fund balance, and we're projecting, which is very, very close, at year end of $13,650. We started the year with 740,000, 558,000. We budgeted, we ended with, as of 9:30, 740. So if you take the 699 off the 712, you're going to end up with 13,650. So there's really not a lot of room in, in that budget. So just to go over this again, I mean, we're projecting, we're still, if you want to use 49.89 mils, we're not projecting a tax increase again for eight years because the mileage has not changed. It's just a matter of putting money from, like I said earlier, if we could add more to the street lighting, you might take it away from recreation, but when you look at the overall picture, taxes have been remaining the same. I don't know, it's not been easy, but we've been accomplishing that. And, you know, the key to this whole thing is if you look over the past eight years, what has been accomplished in this town with roads, street lighting, traffic signals, new buildings, new borough buildings, new police, police cars, doubling the police force, I mean, all the things that this council has accomplished, you really need to pat yourself on the back because nothing in this town has been done like this in the last 30 or 40 years. So what this council's accomplished over eight years is amazing without raising taxes. The only two tax increases we had was one to pay the skating rink and one to balance the budget. And no matter how you cut it or what you want to say is the mileage hasn't changed in the last six years. So I think the question is, you know, why wasn't this done before when the infrastructure of this town was literally falling apart? And, I mean, cops basically had cars with 150, 160,000 miles, holes in the floor, and Bobby, you attest to that, you drove our police cars, so...
I wonder where all that money went? I mean, seriously.
That's the question I think some council members should be asking some of their friends, where all this money went before and that, you know, you should, when you meet on, when you meet on Friday, you should ask where the money went.
I'm still trying to figure out where the million bucks is.
Now, if you can figure it out, let us, let us know.
I'm still trying to figure it out.
Oh, that would be fantastic.
I'm trying to find that million bucks.
So I would love to find it too. But again, this Friday's the tree lighting ceremony. Hopefully, everybody could, could make it. As you know, Anthony gets his treatments Monday, Wednesday, and Friday. Leo's on night work. They've been in contact with the manager, I don't know, Lorraine and Betty, I don't know.
They're both sick. They're both, they're all in sick.
So...
Just, just say again, if you don't mind, Friday night, a lot of people in town have gone that this is really a, a group effort. A lot of people have gotten together to make this really memorable. So, you know, it's, it's going to be geared towards children. Santa Claus is going to be, it's going to be a lot of fun, and the night's going to be beautiful. So Friday night at the Wharf at 6:30, and then again, the Christmas parade on Saturday. And I urge all council members to be there.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I forgot, we can't leave yet. We got this rescue squad ambulance to deal with. The rescue squad request of $10,000 a year.
I...
Is this an, can we do this in executive? We're not allowed, or? I want, really don't want to put people on the spot with this, and I think that we should do something for them. I think that, you know, it's a life savings piece of equipment that benefits us.
How do you justify giving it to the rescue squad? You turn down the fire department? I don't understand that.
They're asking for...
Rescue squads, they have to make it hurt. The idea is to prevent them from getting hurt. So that's what, you know, what the fire department does?
Well, I think the rescue squad responds to a lot more calls than...
I don't know.
I don't know.
If you're going to give them one, then you got to give them one.
Well, we're giving the fire... Well, we're giving the fire department, there are allotments, it's going from five to four, we think, right now. I mean, that's the recommendation in the mayor.
Can we have them come in, Ralph, and, and give us a...
We can have them come in, but we got to figure a way to, either we add this after we pass the budget, uh...
Can we do that, Billy?
We can always vote to spend something next year.
I mean, I don't have a problem committing to maybe half of that for five years, or something like, maybe $5,000 a year.
Still got that outstanding with the Riverfront Theater yet, and that's 10 grand.
Well, we left that in the budget.
Cut that back a little bit.
We can.
We can.
It's in recreation.
Well, and I'm going to be, I'm going to be honest here, I think it's unfair to ask four council people, who has sat here for the last two and a half hours, and made, you know, we worked this, this, it hasn't been, this is no picnic for me either, Buster, but I don't want us to have to make a decision.
Why don't I call everybody up this week and try to get a feel for what they want to do?
Right.
And either we could discuss it at our work session...
Like Billy said, we can always vote to do it, you know?
We could change the budget, I mean, we could change things at our work session on the fifth or whenever it is. Does anybody feel we need to come back tomorrow night to go over this again, or...
I, I could work it out at the work session.
Yeah, I think we did fine. I don't see that we're, I don't think that there's...
Let's have another meeting, Ralph. Come on.
It's an immediate meeting. It's a meeting himself out.
Come on, let's have a meeting.
For another four hours today.
Eric, we could have one every night, till, till December 31st.
At the last meeting, you did say Wednesday and Thursday, if needed, which was Thanksgiving evening.
Now, I, I think that we're all on the same page. I think we've asked all the questions. I don't see how this can change for the better or for the worse, as far as the...
Well, if anybody wants to add something to the agenda, or to the budget, or delete something, just email Jim during the week and say, you know, I really, you know, or have a question, just get in touch with the manager and say, "I think we should do this," or, and we'll talk about it at the work session.
Remember, you're just passing a preliminary budget, which needs to be advertised and open to the public, but it could be changed before you adopt it.
Right.
So there's time to make minor changes.
Okay.
Right now, we're just looking to pass the proposed budget, so we can get in by the 29th, get it advertised, so there'll be time to change it.
All right.
All right.
Before we leave and wrap this up, I guess, Jim, you might know this, how's it going to look for this year for money coming from the state, county, or government for grants and stuff like that, or everything's tightening up and down there, too?
I think everybody's saying there's no money, no funds available at this time.
A motion to adjourn?
Is it all right to advertise the lease, start the process?
All right by me.
Okay. Anybody, ladies, or anybody have anything you want to add before we leave?
Yeah.
Yes?
How about the money that each individual, the higher I give at the end of the year, the rescue squad, you give $25 in check. She said the same tonight. What about the money that we send in to the rescue squad?
Right. Well, the only thing I can do is ask them to be here with their financials for the work session.
We need to see what they get.
Explain everything to everybody and see what we can do. Merrill, you have anything, or?
Yeah, I just think that Angie and the manager did an excellent job with the budget.
Yeah, thank you. Good job, man.
That's what they're supposed to do, that's what they get paid for, sorry.
I got a motion to adjourn?
Got moved.
Backing people for doing their job. I know.